Of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees to order. We do have a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. We now come to the portion of this meeting for public participation. So, I don't think we have anybody signed up. It doesn't look like we have anybody jumping out of their chair to come speak. So, we'll move on to the continuous improvement portion of our meeting and starting with a pre-K update.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Today, we have Kristi Hansen and Tasha Bjork that are going to actually take a seat at the table to provide the board an opportunity to review the current status of our pre-K programs. Remember, we've got three strands of those that are all receiving the same curriculum. Those are our Head Start students, those are our qualifying pre-K students, and our tuition pre-K students. Remember, Head Start and qualifying pre-K students actually meet a certain threshold for household income to be able to qualify for either qualifying pre-K or Head Start. There's various services, additional services that are provided for the Head Start students. We'll actually give you all some data on that today. So, I'm gonna go and turn it over to Dr. Hansen and your CFO, Ms. Bjork, so that they can provide us this update.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
Okay, the first thing we'll do is discuss the classrooms and the makeup. So, we have eight Head Start bilingual classrooms and 14 Head Start monolingual. And then for pre-K, we have two bilingual and 12 monolingual. So, we have 36 classrooms, pre-K in the district, and every campus has one with the exception of Caldwell. Now, for the student counts, we have 145 Head Start bilingual and 278 Head Start monolingual, pre-K qualifying bilingual 43, pre-K qualifying monolingual 151, and then we have 60 that pay tuition. So, there are a total of 677 students in the pre-K classrooms. Last year, we had 625 and we added four. There's four classrooms this year. Any questions on that before Kristi goes?
Did the pre-K, last year, is that number included Head Start?
Yes.
And so, the growth of 50-ish students, where did that, was it spread out across all sources or was it concentrated?
It was our pre-K, the TISD pre-K. The Head Start was about the same. So, the four added were regular pre-K.
On the Head Start grant, there's a certain number of students. There's a little bit of variation above and below that, or actually below that, I guess.
Well, 22 classrooms.
Right, so many classrooms per, and then we try to stock those at the amount of 20, is it 20 per classroom? So, you can't, once you write that grant, you can't go above the grant. You can't go too far. And then, we want you to stay pretty tight in regard to trying to get as, that many students in those Head Start classrooms as well. So, that's why the growth is in the pre-K. And we, I'm not, I don't know if we have Head Start, if people are on a waiting list or not, or if we've been able to serve all those. There is a waiting list. So, that typically happens every year. If a student moves out, then we'll call that waiting list, we'll start accessing that waiting list, and then we'll just plug those students in on that waiting list.
So, if a, if a student is on the waiting list for Head Start, would there be a slot in our pre-K program open for them? So, I mean, because a Head Start qualifier is also gonna be a state qualifier, right?
Should be. Yeah.
That'd have been where the growth came from.
Depends upon space. So, again, we're not gonna go over that 20 to, well, 20 to 2 ratio, I guess, right?
Well, in our, in TISD pre-K, we can have 22, but we have to save room for the special ed children that come in that are in pre-K also. And so, we have a little bit of space in our pre-K, but not very much. But, yes, they were.
We can plug 'em in. We always try to see where they can fit. We actually had a staff person here in Tyler ISD that, because of their income from the previous fiscal, since it's all based on IRS data, that she actually qualified for Head Start, I believe.
Yes.
Right, but a normal, her normal salary, because she was on leave and then actually missed out on some, some paycheck, so she actually qualified, so we were able to plug her into, to Head Start. Whereas normally, if she was on a normal salary, if she'd have met her full salary year, she'd have been a tuition-paying pre-K. So, yes, we, whenever kids come here, we try to fit them to where that they are eligible per their household income.
So, let me ask you this question. How many students on the Head Start waiting list?
The Nora has.
I'm looking. You need to come on up.
Five.
Five.
Five? Well, y'all serving a good number, okay.
Yes. A lot of those income-eligible pre-K students probably would have been, some of those would have been on our wait list, so we were able to go ahead and place them in pre-K.
Oh, that's wonderful. That's good, okay.
That number is five more than usually.
Was it 160?
The wait list number?
The wait list.
Yes, because.
Cause we have pre-K.
We have pre-K classrooms, so rather than being on the wait list, we were able to go ahead and serve them all.
That's wonderful. Have we received the lists previously? And I just can't remember of where the programs are, each school, who has a pre-K and who has a Head Start.
Well.
Do you remember?
I think you have.
Yes, I think we did that in September.
Earlier.
Yeah, it was pretty early.
All right. I thought so.
I have it here if you're interested in one particular campus.
Okay.
So, I'll talk a little bit about how we're trying to, I think I have that done, how we're trying to help build continuity against all, among all of the various pre-K classrooms and programs. So, a lot of that comes through training to ensure that all of the teachers have the high-quality training. So, one of the things that we've started with, of course, is letters, Voyager letters, which is, there's an early childhood version. So, every single pre-K teacher, whether they are Head Start or non-Head Start, are, is going through the letters, the Voyager letters program this year. And next year, we'll just do onboarding with new pre-K teachers. We also have four pre-K academies during the school year, and those pre-K academies focus on, one of the things we're doing is make, ensuring that every single pre-K teacher, regardless of programming, understands the Texas Education Agency's pre-K standards. It's really important that everyone is looking at the state standards, because that, that's how we operate related to curriculum and instruction. So, we're doing a lot of training around the pre-K standards, the high-quality pre-K standards, which we've seen a lot of in-house Bill III. People are talking about those more. Every pre-K teacher has had an introduction to CIRCLE or had some training on CIRCLE, and CIRCLE is the assessment that pre-K students take, and we report those results to the state. So, they, they all have had some, they'll have some more before the third wave of CIRCLE comes, which is gonna be about January, and then we'll have a second wave of CIRCLE assessment in, towards the end of the year. So, we do a lot of training before CIRCLE happens, and then we get the data and work with the teachers to help them understand how to personalize learning based on that CIRCLE data when it comes in. Every pre-K teacher has gone through some class training. Now, CLASS is an observational tool that is required by Head Start. So, it's really important to know that there are still some specific requirements that are unique to Head Start, because it's a federal program. What we did do is we had every pre-K teacher go through the basic two-hour, two-hour training on CLASS, on that observational tool, because when done well, when the class observation is done well, then it really can help any teacher know how to better interact with four-year-olds, in our case, four-year-olds. And the Head Start teachers also are going through conscious discipline, so they are required to do that. That's part of the grant. So, every Head Start teacher is going through that, and every pre-K teacher is having some introduction to it. But, we're not having them go through all of the modules. But, so, we're working very hard to look at the unique programming and make sure that everyone has some similar training. In addition to that, we've had three of the instructional specialists go to the class training and become class certified. Previous to that, we only had Head Start staff class certified, so that we can ensure, again, that we're getting, that we're calibrated, that we're, we're really observing according to what's important to, to the district. So, that's, that's a lot of the training that we've been working on. Any questions about that before I get into the data?
So, the Head Start, who's being trained again?
So, we had, for CLASS?
Yes.
Reverend Mason? Okay, so, for CLASS, we had Head Start staff trained. We had two Head Start certified people in CLASS. We felt like it was important to have people who also were not in Head Start certified, so that we could kinda calibrate what was, what was important across the district. And, so, we did, we had three people. We sent them to that training.
You, did you go to that training, Ms. Jones?
We sent three instructional specialists that, that are more, are pre-K oriented instructional specialists.
Reverend Mason, Mr. Sterling, y'all received those in September as part of the enrollment update of where the pre-K classes are located.
Right, I thought we did. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions about the training? So, now, let's look at the CIRCLE data, and the very first thing I wanna tell you is that even though it says overall measure up at the top, the overall measure is not directly, the, those subcategories do not determine the overall measure. They're separately measured. So, that's an important indication, I mean, that's an important distinction, because it looks as if that wouldn't all add up. What's important to know here is that for the, for the students, for the district overall, if you look at that number, we have almost 70% of the students that are considered on target to be kindergarten-ready, that were considered on target to be kindergarten-ready at the beginning of the year when they took this CIRCLE assessment. And you can see there that the Head Start's in green, the non-Head Start is in blue, and the district is in purple. So, there's not a big difference there between how our kids come to us as far as being kindergarten-ready overall. Now, when we get into the specific skills, then you'll see some differences there. So, as far as rhyming, we had only, you know, less than 20% of any of the students that were going to be, that, that were on target to be kindergarten-ready. Alliteration, onset rhyme, and syllabication. So, that syllabication is really an indication of, usually of their verbal, how many words, vocabulary words they have. So, that doesn't surprise us that we had kind of a higher amount for, for our non-Head Start kids there. So, that's the phon, that's the phonemic awareness piece, and that just gives us an indication of where, where the kids are and how we can get them started. And as I said, in January, we're gonna give a whole new wave, and then we'll be able to have some comparative data. And these are the math skills. So, again, there's the overall score, but those subsets do not necessarily add up to give you that overall score. They're actually measured differently. So, you can see, again, that there, in the subsets, there are some big differences between Head Start students and non-Head Start students. But, in our overall measure of whether kids are ready or on target to be ready for kindergarten, which is what CIRCLE measures, then there's not a huge difference.
So, where you see, I don't, well, maybe one or two are huge differences. Where you see a huge difference, do you go on and attack those areas?
Right. We, that's exactly what we do. We personalize the learning based on those differences, and we help the teacher make sure that they include more of those types of lessons for their specific students.
So, each one of these areas are weighted differently? Is that what you're saying when it comes down to this overall measure?
They're actually not weighted differently at all. They're, they're, the students take an overall measure assessment, and then separately, they take these subsets.
Okay.
So, it looks as if the overall, those subsets should equal that overall measure, but it does not.
Okay.
They're complete, they're different tests, within the test.
Okay.
And then, these are other measures that I just kinda wanted you to see as well, as far as the academic pieces. So, rapid vocabulary, again, you do see a difference there. We know that, that poverty is associated with a, a lot of times with lower vocabulary and those types of things. So, this is where you will see bigger differences. But, one of the things I do want you to see is the social-emotional behavioral pieces, there's not a big difference. So, what we hope to see and what we expect to see is when I bring the data back to you, we should see very similar lines like that. I mean, we wanna see growth, obviously, but if we start seeing big gaps between our Head Start kids and our non-Head Start kids, that's where, as an organization, we have to begin to talk about what's happening systemically that is, that might be causing some of that.
So, we are, we are still, other philosophy, the board members, that we want all of these students on grade level, so regardless to where they measure right now, even in Head Start, the Head Start students are still gonna get this curriculum to move them on to the next level, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, they'll be kindergarten-ready?
Right, that's correct. So, they are using the DLM Express curriculum, which is Head Start-approved. There are, we do have some modifications within the ELAR and more of them within the mathematics, because the DLM really doesn't match the state standards. And so, we have really done a lot of work inside the, the pre-K mathematics to make that more aligned with state standards, less aligned with core content, core, and have the kids more kindergarten-ready. And we've got a little pushback about that.
We got a pushback?
Yeah, well, we have an, we have an oversight person, you know, a Head Start oversight person that comes in, you know, but we're working it out.
Not, not a district person?
No, it's a contractor from, this is what got us in this all, this whole thing.
Yes.
They, they hire a contractor. It's not an actual, well, maybe an employee of Head Start, but it's not a, it's contracted position.
It's a contracted position by Head Start.
They just deploy out. So, it could, based upon the individual's personality, they have a lot of authority being that governmental person deployed out. So, that's what she's talking about. And that's what got us in this jam in the first place, was being told thou shalt do it this way. It was just the individual's perception of a lot of things. It wasn't actually coming from Washington DC. That's what we figured out when we got the, this summer.
So, we're working on that, because we board members have expectations too.
No doubt.
Well, yeah.
So, they're not gonna.
No, we, we feel pretty good that Dr., was Bergeron?
Mm-hmm.
We still have, we still have our phone numbers.
Yes.
Hey, board, one thing I love about this data right here, this last one, the social-emotional behaviors, look at the, the, the rate on that, the percentage on that and how close it is. Let me tell you what, more than anything, we can do as school administrators, as principals, is to eradicate that soft bigotry of low expectations of these kids coming from a certain background.
Act a certain.
Act a certain way, therefore, I can't teach them with high expectations or demand high things from them. That's what I say on that. So, that's a, that's a common crutch that we love to use, and I'm not saying Tyler does that, but in education of these kids can't do it, well, because they, they act a certain way. Well, they're all acting the same way. My kid, your kid, their kid, they're all acting pretty good on those social-emotional behaviors. They understand things. So, very good data to show with our staff so that we can teach them and not hold back because we think that they can't do it.
Those are age-long perceptions.
They're acting developmentally appropriate for a four-year-old, is really what the data's saying, is all of them are, you know?
That's great news.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any questions about the data that I can help you with?
So, you, we'll come back again and we'll see the comparative data.
Right, so, we'll do another wave in January, and then, at the pleasure of the board, we'll bring you the comparative data, and then we'll have another wave at the end of the year. And like I said, our expectation is that those gaps do not grow. Now, that, that will be different than what we've seen in the past. So, but the expectation is that those gaps stay right in there together, and that the, you know, obviously, the, those purple and green lines in the subsets get better as well.
I'm still very happy we went in the direction we went in, Dr. Crawford, because I feel like our students need this.
Absolutely.
Every kid deserves the good stuff. Again, that last data point down there, that, that right there, so, every kid deserves the good stuff, behaviors are all the same, they're high-functioning four-year-olds, no matter where they, what zip code they live in, let's teach them.
That's right.
So.
Was this, this assessment wasn't previously used? This is the first time Tyler's used it, or is this something that we've been using?
It was previously used. We, we used it last year, we used the CIRCLE data last year, you say? Yeah, we used CIRCLE last year for Head Start as well. And the, that's what I was sort of alluding to Reverend Hager, is that, that, we, we looked at the end-of-the-year data last year, and the, the lines were just huge. The differences were phenomenal between where the kids ended in non-pre-K and where they ended in Head Start. And that's what I'm saying, is that, you know, my expectation is that those lines stay together, and that we don't, we're not, we as a group are not creating gaps.
That's correct.
So, we could see at the end of the year cohort data to see compared gains last year that those kids made versus different set of kids, the gains they made this year?
Cohort data, meaning that the pre-K kids who went to kindergarten here in Tyler ISD? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, I recognize there are separate groups of kids, but we could see the growth last year and compare the growth this year.
Yes, we could look at that data. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be the same kids, but sure, we can compare.
Yeah, we can give it to you.
Yes, sure.
But, we should be able to give last year's pre-K data and this year's kindergarten, somewhere, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
What we don't have identified from last year is necessarily, it's not in teams. We can get it manually, who was Head Start, who was pre-K, cause they were coded, we coded them differently this year, I think. It's easier to pull that data this year.
Ms. Jones, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I am. You, you've been a part of this great change. I consider it a great change. What are your impressions so far?
It is a work in progress, but I think we, as a district, have embraced it. We are trying to make sure that, as we tell our parents, that there is no difference as we go from a Head Start classroom to a pre-K classroom, it's more about the financial coding than anything else.
Right.
As far as we're concerned.
All right.
And I've seen us working together as a team to make sure the training is there and that we are expressing our expectations and providing the support so that we can get the things that we expect. So, I'm thinking, we are working well as a team to make that happen.
So, our parents, Dr. Crawford and administrators, our parents are more positive now, they see the, the implementation stages are going in a great direction.
Well, I don't think this is the only data that we have for you. Don't we have more on here? Yeah, just go ahead and flip through that, Vanora. I mean, it, we're still providing, well, I don't know about satisfaction, but, cause people like to be unsatisfied.
Surely not.
But, I almost said something else.
Surely not, I'm glad.
I didn't wanna say that. But, in saying that, we, we are continuing with the wraparound services. If you wanna take us, you don't have to read every one of these, these folks can read. But, we certainly have the Head Start wraparound services that we're providing. We don't have as many contracted, what do you call them?
M.O.U.s?
Yeah, the contracted services. So, you know, you may hear some vendor angst out there about that, but as far as the amount of students and, and families who are receiving these wraparound services, very similar to what we were doing.
That's good.
So, go ahead, Vanora, I mean, we can just talk.
Just talk? Again, with the continuation of Head Start, there is an expectation that we provide certain services, and so, to remain compliant with our 432, then we are trying to make sure that all the students get their screenings, we check for speech, we're doing behavioral observations, and as you can look at those numbers, we are, you know, making sure all the students get the services that they, we have always tried to provide as part of Head Start. And really, when you look at those physical exams, most of the time here, the families have insurance, they're in the process of getting those physical exams, but if they don't have the means to do it, then those, that's where we step in. And if you look at that number, that's a low number, so, most of the families had insurance and they're working on them, and we're still working with them to get them in. So, we will meet that expectation as well. I haven't experienced very much negative, if any, comments at all from the families. They are, you know, it's just trying to make sure that they know that we're still here and we're trying to provide the services. Our biggest concern is just looking at sometimes the sites where the seats are available, you know, but other than that, that's been, you know, probably the major concern, just making sure that as we place or decide where those Head Start classrooms are there, gonna, going to be placed, that they're in, at schools that are convenient for the parents, and that's a process, it's a process.
Yeah, and I'll say this too, I think that with the shift that we did, whenever we had some of the public participation, you know, it's one of those deals of you want us involved, we get involved. And I think inspecting some of the, some of the personnel, the structures that we had along with some of the individuals, it was one of these deals of if you weren't gonna be on the home team and you weren't, and you weren't gonna be a part of this transformation, maybe you needed to go, and that might have been some of the pot stirring that was going on. And so, in saying, we've, we've got a good team assembled now.
Assembled.
Didn't say we had a poor team assembled, but the right people stuck with us and have seen the, the opportunity here for us, and I think they have really helped us in massaging the parents' attitudes and whatnot. Whereas, I think in the past, those that did not stay with us during this process might have been a catalyst for, for encouraging some of that dissatisfaction for change. We haven't really changed a lot of stuff here. We really, the purpose on this, it's like we said at this DIAS, was to take control of something that was not working in conjunction with the, the board's vision, administration's operational vision, and we've got that calibrated now. And I think that that's a, that's a thing that, that we'll continue to do. Is there another slide behind this? Yeah, there you go. So, there you go. That's, that's what I was kinda getting at, was the home visits that have been made.
And those referrals, like I said, those were the cases where if the families did not have the means to provide those services, then we, I actually worked with the contractors to make sure that happens.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't wanna say stay the same, maybe more efficient, improved, certainly more of an academic focus in our Head Start classrooms. That's, that's our side of things, but we have been compliant with the wraparound service provisions that are required in the grant as well. Happy to report that to you today. There's the policy council numbers for you as well?
We've had our meetings on the second Thursday of each month. We had a special meeting in October, because we, we did apply, you know, for the recompetition grant, and then had to be taken to that committee so they could see it. We have our voting strength of a representative from each classroom along with an alternate, and we have three community members on the council as well. And one of the, another wraparound services that we offer is that we offer babysitting during those meetings, and they are bringing the children, and we're providing those services as well. And... And that's just some of the topics we've already, always, already covered in those meetings.
And again, we have applied for next year's grant, in case anybody asks you out there. So, um, now, this year's grant did not allow for us to blend the pre-K, Head Start, um, tuition kids. Did we write into this, this grant separately? The same, or we, or next year, are we looking at actually combining those classes?
We wrote it to stay, you know, separate.
We're going to stay separate, okay. Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I think the, it it helps us administratively to be able to do that because of the the additional services that the Head Start kiddos, um, receive. As long as we have the curriculum, uh, is equitable, we feel good that that we're going to be able to accomplish our academic goals on that.
I was telling Reverend Hager, in the past, board members have had to serve on their policy council. And when the monitoring team came, you had to meet with the monitoring team. So I assume that must have changed because, uh, no one here has been asked in the years past.
There is an expectation that we have a liaison between, uh, the board and and the policy council. Uh, what we've been doing thus far is just providing you with communication as part of that monthly board packet.
As long as we're in compliance.
Okay.
Yeah, that's compliant, doesn't mean you have to go to the actual, uh, policy council meetings. If you choose to go, that you can.
You're welcome to come, though, if you want to.
Thank you.
Let me just commend the team and the administration for the vision to take control of a critical area in our district, to continue to, uh, act in a way that's what's best for kids, regardless of political pressure, and to focus on student outcomes. So, this is great data. Look forward to seeing, uh, what comes in the mid-year report and the end-of-year report as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work. Any other questions or comments on the pre-K update? If not, we'll move along to the hashtag Safe T I S D update.
So, Safe T I S D, it's a, it's, it's, the hashtag's a pun. It's Safe T I S D.
Safe T, ah.
You haven't caught that yet? Okay, there you go. All right.
First time I heard it, you know.
Okay, there you go. All right. Um, so this is our, uh, one of our quarterly, um, safety updates. And we've got some actual, some, um, opportunity for the board to take action, um, past this as well. That's actually statutory required, statutorily required. And I have Dr. Jennifer Jones, our Director of Guidance and Counseling, that helped put this together as we were waiting to bring Agent Millsleygal on board. He's sitting right over here with, next to Mr. Loper. Um, and so today, we have her sitting at the table. She's going to take us through, um, some of the things that we have to do as far as these, what they call threat assessment teams, statutorily. We're calling them the Safe T I S D teams, and then the campus teams as well, that we are statutorily required to, to have. Dr. Jones?
Good, good morning, board members, Dr. Crawford. With, um, new legislation, there's some changes that needed to be made, um, to help with mental health, um, help our students. And we like to look at it as more of a prevention or intervention process. And so with that, the legislative, um, the legislators have had us put together some safety, our Safe T I S D team, to assess students who may be in a crisis. And so today, we're going to discuss the teams because we have requirements for the oversight team for a district, but also individual campus teams. And so with that, they've given us specific individuals that they'd like for us to put on our team to be able to assess our students who may be in a crisis. And, um, that has to do with students who may be having an outcry. And that shows through behaviors, um, sometimes concerning behaviors for self-harm, concerning behaviors for self-harm, but also for, um, threatening maybe others. And so this is what our team will do to look at. I liken it to maybe a special ed team who's coming in to look at a student who has a disability, um, or struggling with challenges. The team comes together, evaluates that child, looks at their history, looks to see what issues they may have, and then develops a plan to intervene to help, because our goal is to improve student outcomes. And and that's in all ways. And so it's almost like a medical team. The team comes in, someone has a health issue. The team is trying to determine, uh, what's going on with that individual. And they look at all different pieces. We'll look at their history, their health, um, behaviors, things that have happened in their lives, which we call ACES, which are adverse childhood, um, adverse childhood, um, si- situations.
Experiences.
Experiences where they've, um, had something that's triggered in their life, or stressors. So, um, with that, the safety team will be a multidisciplinary team that will come in when we do have an outcry, and will evaluate and look at the level of the situation, and then put in a prevention plan for that student to be able to assist them with the, um, their crisis that they're having at that time, and put into place a plan to follow up with them and ensure that they have what they need, which in most cases would be counseling and, um, assistance. So, with that said, our team will gather when we may have an incident, and we'll look at those kids. We'll help and put a plan together if there's a, a child that may have been threatened by that student. We'll put into a plan to assist that other child. So, with this, our threat assessment team will really be, uh, a team that builds and helps a child. So, with that said, on, um, the presentation, you'll see that we'll provide guidance to teachers and staff and training. We'll also look at physical, um, psychological, and other areas to be able to implement and use research best practices to help those students with the mental health issues that they may be experiencing.
We, uh, we already do this on a daily basis. Um, certainly, we want to be compliant with what the eighty-six legislature came up with and and meet those requirements. But, you know, whenever you have something that happens like this, in not so much a formal way, but now this is a more formalized way to document those concerns and and get the right resources to get it, to help a kid. In a physical situation where there might be some type of threatening situation, or, um, again, this is, we've got resources that we already dedicate now, um, to be able to accomplish that. So, the today's meeting is more of a compliance opportunity for the board to adopt those structures. Uh, once you get to this action item down here, there's nothing actually formally in rules right now from the Texas Education Agency. Uh, they're, they're struggling with some of it, too. We're thinking January, uh, to get some of these formalized rules out. What we've heard from legal experts, from attorneys, is to get these threat assessment teams in place. So if there are issues, uh, if there are incidents that occur, that that you can refer back to that, that you did have this, this one action from the board meeting. So, uh, y'all can understand some of this stuff that came out of the last legislative session. Um, may not look as, um, preventative as we would have liked. But there's some politics behind this. I mean, we can be very honest about that because they want to be able to say that we did stuff at the Austin level, and we trickled it down to the local education level. And if there is an incident that does happen, they can refer back to that, that they, yeah, they had their Safe T I S D teams in place. They went through these processes, they had this documentation, they had these resources dedicated to help these students. Or they can go back and say, we put it in statute, and the local school district didn't put their teams together, it's on them now. So, uh, we, we're looking at it as a positive, that we can actually get a little bit more structured in the way that we do. We've been talking about this for over a year now, plus, a year plus, actually. So, um, again, we think we can help kids that are, maybe have, that are, uh, that are feeling self-harmed, uh, heart, self-harmful, or maybe wanting to harm others as well, and we can get ahead of that.
There's usually a trigger on that.
Yeah, there's usually a trigger. You shared with me the other day, uh, this, uh, we've had some early, we have some early data from now.
Yes, we do, we do.
So, we've had some ninety, ninety-plus cry-outs, um, to date on, in regards to students that have had some issues on.
Oh, cause on self-harm.
Yeah, it's, it's, it was not the, uh, harm of others. It was more of inward self, um, challenges that that they may be having, uh, as far as some things that they may be dealing with. So, uh, kudos to our counseling teams on our campuses for being able to, uh, to figure that out and get them to the right resources for that.
The good relationships with the kids to be able to have them started, um, when school came back. Cause kids feel safe and they, they're safe people.
You were sharing with me, we do have systems, uh, I guess there's technology in place to where we can share that data readily within our in- intra, intra system?
Yes, yes. It, through, through our, the process of form, I think it's called Form Space, um, through Ediforia.
Yeah.
And they, when they do, when a counselor has a student that maybe, um, have some suicidal thoughts.
Yeah.
They have that discussion, but then they input the form, and then we receive, um, the form. We don't know who the individual student is for confidentiality reasons.
At our level, but the actual campus does.
The counselor has that information. And, um, and so we keep track of that. And it's at different levels, you know, low level to high level concerns, uh, knowing if they're already seeking counseling or going to screening for counseling. Um, parents are contacted, of course, and all of these. But we have that data to ensure, but the counselors know who these kids are. And these are, unfortunately, with this, these are the kids that have come to us.
How does that alert you when they put some, something into, uh, free, what's it called, free form?
It, it, it's a direct, you, you know, when they hit submit, it goes to be.
So, it alerts you via email or something, that that you've got a new?
I do. I receive it instantly on the email. And then they do contact me, too, when they have some severe concerns. But, um, Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I don't, she'd have to ask.
K, K through twelve.
Yeah.
It's even at the early age, unfortunately. Um, sometimes the younger, the very younger ones, um, may say some things, um, and they don't know the, um, they, they say things that they might hear, but it may not be as concerning, but it's still a concern. We, we take it all as a concern, but as they get older as well, um, it, 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 it's, it's scary. We want to make sure that we get those preventions. And that's why I, I really like, you know, ensuring that we have a specific plan to actually evaluate these kids. We're putting together procedures to look at that. And it's, it's a, a solid plan to be able to look at all different areas and really focus besides just, you know, having a conversation with a kid. Really looking at all the aspects to make sure that we can help them prevent any future issues, hopefully. Our LPCs that we have on campus have been very beneficial, that you approved for the next step to come in and do some therapeutic counseling. So, when we have some of these students, we refer them over to them, and then they have a deeper level of therapy for those situations.
Yeah. Y'all know me, I, I like to be pragmatic about stuff and get on the academic side. I do think that this is a very important, um, function of our school system. So, some of those social things that we have to fight, this is appropriate. This has been in our schools for years. This is not something new that we have to deal with. Um, and I don't care what school you're at, charter, private, or public, you're going to wind up having these issues. So, um, glad we're structured this way. So, this is one of the social, emotional learning things that's coming your way, so that's SEL. And another thing that's coming is, is we have to have a district-wide character ed program.
Yes, we do.
Uniform, it's got to be officially adopted by the board. There's also some statutory requirements on that. So, we're going through the process of vetting those. Um, think, um, give me some examples, Dr. Hanson and Dr. Jones.
Well, we have a character count, leader, me.
Ned.
There's a few more out there.
There's a few more out there, so. But the district actually has a uniform, has to have per statute, a uniform character ed thing. It's not a, well, these deals, we have thirty different character ed programs that you're managing, so.
There needs to be an alignment.
There's an alignment there, requirement. So, we'll be bringing that to you here pretty soon. Any other questions about this port, the social, emotional portion before we get to the action items? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, got a couple of action items. Do we need to separate them? Or, um, um, you know, I, I tell you, if you don't mind a brief separation, just real quick, so I can kind of go over. So, in your packets, you have the actual team structures. Can you get to that? Do we have that on? Or it might be at your, there it is right there. Good. Um, so those are the actual individuals on the district-level team, right there in front of you. That's the district-level Safety I S D team, um, or Threat Assessment Team. Jeff Millsleygal, the Director of Safety and Security, Jared Bitt, you can read, go down the list there. But they're actually prescriptive for what's, what, uh, statute wants you to have as represented on there. So, you have to have school administration, behavior management, counseling services, mental health, and substance abuse being taken care of, classroom instruction, special ed, emergency management, safe, school safety and security, and then law enforcement as well. So, there's actually three things on there for security type of, of membership on the campus-level teams. Each campus-level team, um, is, is specific to that campus. So, the principal, the assistant principal, and the counselor, the nurse. And then we, uh, we assign out one police officer. We've got, um, X amount of police officers. They're clustered, they may have two or three schools that they're responsible for. Um, Agent Millsleygal and Danny Brown, Chief Brown, are actually responsible for every, all thirty of these threat assessment teams that we have. So, hopefully, we won't have thirty in one day. Um, we also, obviously, if we need to slide in, Rojo or myself or someone can always, or one of the SIOs can actually slide in as representative as well.
Are we ensuring that someone is bilingual on these teams, campus level?
Right. And so on the campus level, here's the, here's the deal, is we, we're never probably going to sla- slide in who these representatives are. It's going to be on a case-by-case basis. So, if we need to pull a bilingual person in, they'll come in. If a bilingual person is not needed on that threat assessment team, then we'll continue with their normal duties during the day. So, we'll certainly be aware of that, just like we always are. Uh, but the, the two things that you're adopting are this structure right here that's going to be at every one of our campuses. We'll communicate that out to our principals, provide the appropriate training when that appropriate training comes. And then the other thing that you're providing is on page seven, uh, an action on approval or non-approval of the actual district's threat assessment team, uh, which is kind of my team. And we meet once a month, right now, right after we, the leadership team, uh, the agenda-setting team of my, my, my function meets. We meet right after that to discuss safety and security issues with our, with our, uh.
So, the, the campus team will only meet when there's a need. They don't have a regular meeting?
Yeah, I, well, I don't know. We don't know about that yet. We may do that. Um, just, you know, we'll see if that's something that's needed in consultation with Agent Millsleygal, and then maybe even talking to our principals about, uh, if they have some guidance on what they need to talk about, that's certainly something they do. But I, I have a s- a suspicion that our, at least our secondary campuses are, are having these types of meetings, uh, on a very frequent basis because safety and security is, is certainly, um, it's important at every one of our campuses, but certainly they deal with different situations than maybe an elementary does. So, um, that's a good, good question, and something we'll work on once we get, once we get further down the road.
Okay, any other comments or questions before I entertain a motion?
We're going to approve, okay, both of these.
Yeah, we're, uh, approval, we're taking it one at a time, so this one's just, uh, item A there for the, uh, team and campus team structure. So, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the district's recommendation there.
Move to approve item A.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, ayes have it, motion passes. And we're going to, um, consider the approval of local policy, FFAC, item B.
Congratulations, board. You, you've passed a Senate Bill eleven priority. There you go. Good job. Um, FFAC is the, um, ability to provide Narcan, which is the remediation for, it's an anti-opioid, um, FFAC is the, um, ability to provide Narcan, which is the remediation for, it's an anti-opioid, um, action. Uh, we already approved this at the high schools. Uh, we actually get this donated, I think through Christus Trinity Mother Francis Hospitals. Uh, provide this, the, the, the second reading of this policy. You've already had the first reading for this to actually be available at the middle schools. Remember this is a proactive, um, thing that we're putting in place. It's not that we suspect something's going to happen or that we've had anything happen, but we certainly want to have that ability, um, to have this, uh, at our disposal if needed. It could mean saving someone's life, not just a kid, but an adult, saving someone's life, uh, uh, and not saving someone's life. So thank you for your consideration.
Any questions or comments before we entertain a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. As have it. Motion carries. And, um, now we will move into executive session. I think, uh,
Yeah, we'll be going into executive session, uh, and then from there, we'll actually hop on the, uh, people mover. People mover. For those of y'all that can make the full trips, some of y'all I know have talked to me already that you may have to skate out a little early. So if you want to, if you have to drive your own vehicle, we can. But, um, we'll have the tour bus ready for y'all as soon as we get through with executive session. And then we will actually come back here and adjourn. At least four of you will.
After the tour?
After the tour. Yeah. So we, four of you got to get trapped on the, on the bus with me, at least. Okay?
All right. Good deal.